Okay, it's 6:01. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. And as a reminder, this meeting is being recorded and broadcasted by 1623 Studios. And our first appointment was gonna be at 6:15, however, they've asked to be postponed until our August meeting. So I am gonna ask Brendan to go ahead and start with his report.
Thank you. First item on my report has to do with the fencing around the tennis courts in Memorial Park. I was asked to determine whether the Department of Public Works would take on that task if the selectmen wanted that fence to be taken down. And I was told that they're not equipped to do that, and they would have to hire an outside contractor, a fence company, and the cost there would be around $11,000. In addition, even if you had that money, which we don't right now, we would have to hire a consultant to write the necessary permitting for the Conservation Commission because the posts need to be removed from the ground, including the concrete that is encasing the posts, and that's a disturbance of the ground within the buffer zone. So, again, there's no funding to do that. My assumption at this point is that the board is not looking to have that done. The Department of Public Works is not, has indicated they are not equipped to do it on their own, and I guess even the chain link fence has a special disposal requirement.
And if I'm not mistaken, in previous iterations of the fence being touched, it was, or different fences being touched, it was somebody that either volunteered or we got hired a contractor, is that correct?
You mean...
I will say, I was a little surprised that our DPW can't do it, but if they don't have equipment, I get that.
For which fence? I don't think I've ever dealt with...
Didn't they do when we had the baseball, the field out back done, they did the baseball, yeah, the fencing on that? I don't know if they did the tennis, but...
They may have.
That was probably part of the Friends of Baseball.
The backfield? I don't know about that. I think that may have been part of this. Once the field was, they got permission to put fill in the field from the sewer project, and then once that was done, I believe, a new set of fences went up. But I can't recall whether that was the sewer contractor that did that.
Okay.
There was an arrangement made, but it was a while ago, if that's the case.
Correct, it was quite a while ago.
Is it worth considering putting it on Fall Town Meeting to remove it? Because it seems like it's kind of a waste to, it's, you know that the tennis courts aren't going in for several years, and it is parking, and it's gonna have to come down If we wait for the tennis courts to put it down, then it doesn't serve any purpose as far as parking go. I don't know, just a suggestion. It seems like you could just cut the posts off and fill them with concrete for the time being until the tennis courts are rebuilt, you know?
Then you'd have to dig them out, and then you'd have to...
You gotta dig them out anyway. So let them dig them out when they put in the courts. Because those courts may not happen for 10 years. I mean, they could happen in two years, but it could be 10 years.
Right. Even if you did that, okay, you're still gonna have a cost associated with cutting and then taking down and disposing of the old fence.
That's what I'm saying, maybe put it, put it as an article to discuss at least for Fall Town Meeting.
Yeah. I mean, I do think that as far as, you know, the charges that they presented to us were the takedown and the installation of a new, which would be great to have it in a contract. However, if it's three years from now before they put up the new, are they gonna say, well wait, you, that's not, that's not...
Well, yeah, of course.
Of course, that's a ballpark figure. That's not a bid. We'd have to go through a process.
Correct.
And that would be our cost. That would be the cost for the people who want to put in the tennis courts.
So I'm, do we have to take a motion or just table it until...
If you want me to note it on the list for Fall Town Meeting, I'll do so.
Let's put it on the Fall Town Meeting list so that we can discuss it and see if we go forward with it.
Yeah, right. That's all, that's all I suggest.
All right, I'll do that. Do you want it on Tier Two, Tier Three?
Tier Two's fine.
Tier Two, at this point.
Next item is the placement of recycled asphalt product at the Centennial Grove parking lot. The Superintendent of Public Works was aware of a road grinding project nearby in Hamilton, Bridge Street, as well as some recent work on 128 that involved grinding, and alerted our volunteer coordinator, Dan Mayer, to the fact that this product, which can be laid down in layers to improve the surface of a parking area or a road, was going to be available. The material was brought in, without my knowledge, it was brought in, they had night operations done. The first I knew about it was the, a call from the camp asking when the stuff was gonna be spread, because the camp was going to start that Monday. And I checked in with Dan Mayer about it, asked him about, you know, what was there and why it was there. And he found actually a volunteer to spread the recycled asphalt product over a good portion of the Centennial Grove parking lot, the one down by the field. Later, it was brought to our attention that only a certain amount of square footage of that product can be laid down within the Zone Two of a public water supply system.
Do you know what that is, what that, that square footage?
The Superintendent told me something on the order of 2,500 square feet.
Okay, so not, not much?
Right, not much, without getting special permit. And so, at this point in time, the Board of Public Works discussed the matter at their last meeting. They asked the Superintendent to reach out to the DEP, the people who handle water protection, public water supply protection, to determine what the course of action needs to be and how long we would have, hopefully, to find volunteers or people who want the material to remove it over time. We do not have an answer back yet from the DEP on that. There was no concern on the part of the volunteers who spread the material, because of course, it was sourced through the DPW. In addition, the DPW store, at one point, stored a large amount of that product for another project that got moved to the, to the DPW yard and transfer station in that location. And so, nobody had any idea that it was an issue. It's come up now, so we're working on understanding what the requirement for removal will be. Dan Mayer indicated that, you know, the longer we have, the easier it will be to find perhaps other volunteers who want to use the product. They can come take some or move some of it to the DPW yard, because the product is useful to the town. As you know, it was just spread at Kenomo Point, when asked, along the shoulders of the roadway, and it is also a product that the DPW likes to have on hand to patch areas like the transfer station and the DPW yard. So I'll bring an update to you probably at the next meeting on that matter.
Is any of it usable at the, at the transfer station surrounding the fuel depot or anything leading up to that?
I think perhaps some of the, the approach path and certainly the path behind where they're gonna exit could be improved with it. They also like to keep a full bin of it onsite, on premises. So, the issue, and the Superintendent even said that we have a truck and a driver that would be able to transport it, we just don't have the machinery that will peel it up.
Yeah.
He says, it really needs to be come up, come up with a bulldozer and then be loaded in with an excavator.
We don't need, the, the workers don't need special training?
No, not for that product.
And there's not an area that it can stay versus an area that it should be removed? Like, I know that when you're driving up towards the beach, the right-hand side, you had mentioned it, that it drops off, there's a huge drop off there. I don't know if it's always been like that, I don't, I don't remember.
They were, they were planning to actually get more and then continue the stuff, so that it would...
Away.
...slow it away, and the, the stuff that was spread was spread with a laser level by a very experienced contractor.
It looked good, except for the fact that it had a big drop off.
Because they were waiting to get more and then they were gonna finish it, but then we were told about it. So, again, I'll bring you an update at the next meeting.
And can I just add, do you have anything to say?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, the issue for me is, who's in charge of this area?
The selectmen.
Okay, so we own the responsibility of the Zone Two of the well, right?
No, the Centennial Grove. It happens to be that the Centennial Grove is partially in the Zone Two.
Okay.
But there are many other areas that the Zone Two covers that are not the selectmen's responsibility. The Water Department has their eyes out for activities and the building inspector.
Okay. So, I mean, it bothers me that this happened and that we find out after however much content has been dumped on, this is our drinking water. So I just, I'm concerned that it doesn't seem like anyone is in charge. And while I understand that you're busy, you know, that is our responsibility. So, someone has to be responsible. So, if the DEP is coming or giving us some advice...
They will be, yeah.
Who's in charge of kind of executing on the directives? What is it gonna cost us, if it costs us anything? And, and then we've got other things happening at the Grove that I have no idea. What is the plan? You know, I went to the planning board meeting and there was a site review of the bathrooms, and the bathrooms had already been poured. So, like, what is the plan? Who's in charge? Because I don't think it's fair to have a volunteer take the responsibility for doing a favor and then...
Right, well...
And you don't want them liable.
Really, the DPW is responsible at the Water Department level. I mean, Mike should have let the Water Department know what was going on there and made sure that it was okay.
And that's what I was actually gonna first thank Jason for bringing this to our attention, because it could have been further down the road.
Right.
And then we could have been, you know, even deeper. So I wanted to thank Jason from the, the chief operator from the Water Department for letting us know. Unfortunately, should have, a director of DPW communicated to the whole team, because if you're not gonna look at the, what the books say you're supposed to do, then maybe you rely on your people to do that. So that's, you know, I really think there was a communication gap, because Mike was involved with multiple steps of this.
I think a knowledge gap as well. I don't, I don't think that Mike knew that 2,500 was the number...
I think he was focusing on the Zone One.
On the Zone One.
And he said, keep it out of the Zone One, and that's why they always stored the material outside of the Zone One but in the Zone Two. And nobody knew that it was an issue. So with respect to how it gets handled from here on, we're waiting for the Superintendent to get advice from the DEP as to what needs to be done and how long we have to do it. And then Mike stands ready with an operator and a dump truck, and we have to work on getting equipment, hopefully volunteers, professional contractor volunteers, to load the truck and take the material where it needs to go, which is gonna be in the DPW yard, which is not in the Zone Two.
Mm-hmm.
But to Annie's point, I think that there isn't a real official plan on what we're doing at Centennial Grove, and maybe that's something that we should discuss as selectmen, or maybe there should be a committee put together or something to, to look at it. Because, you know, there's been talk of pickleball, there's, you know, the bathroom, you know, most of the stuff, I think, is going in, but who knows? You know, we might have other great ideas at some point in the next five years.
So, but we should know, because we're responsible, right?
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying.
Isn't the EDC part of it? I mean, that's where I'm, since I've been on, it was...
Or Strategic Planning Committee, would they deal with it?
I think it was the EDC.
I don't, I don't know, but ultimately, the buck stops here, right?
Yeah.
So, I guess I'm asking for some ownership, leadership on what happens next.
Yeah.
I also talked to you, Brendan, about, do we have kind of rough plans about where things are situated? If you're, and what is, what permitting is required to get utilities to the pavilion or to the bathrooms, and how does that...
There's no, there's no permitting required.
Not at all?
No.
Okay, so then...
Besides an electric permit, you know, that Rainey will get when it's time to hook it up.
But before it happens, right? Not...
Right, but we're not even at the point where they have...
Do you drive that, or does...
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I just wanna know who's in charge of what and who's gonna be...
So, for instance, I was in charge of getting the camera system all working down there and the fiber optics spur, and that's all up and running. The pavilion and the restroom facility were reviewed by the selectmen at a site visit. They knew where the pavilion was going, and they knew that adjacent to it was going to be the restroom facility. So, you know, the selectmen were involved with those things. Pickleball and tennis, selectmen have not given permission for any group to do anything with respect to either one of those sports.
But, but something came before Town Meeting to move tennis courts to the Grove, so I don't know, that came from this committee, I'm assuming?
Yes, well, yeah.
From the Preservation Committee, Preservation Committee.
No, it was brought to them, who brought it to them.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You see what I'm saying? I just, I wanna know who's in charge.
It was an article.
Because this is our water, so...
Anything that happens at the Centennial Grove, the selectmen are in charge of it.
Okay.
In this particular case, we had a volunteer that was told that something could be done by the authority that actually runs it.
Yep.
And it didn't seem like there was any problem with that, because it was only improving the surface of a parking lot. But low and behold, we had an issue.
Okay.
So we have to go after that. But, yeah. And that, that's it. I'll give you an update on that as well at the next meeting. And that's my report for tonight.
Is, so that's going right into the street excavation material pile removal update? I was thinking that was at the DPW.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yeah, one more. So the street excavation material pile, looking at what potentially needs to be, to be done there, I'm gonna flip to my notes.
And this is the one that's at the transfer station?
That's right. The DPW at this point is in the process of transitioning from one solid waste engineer who handles things like landfill gas monitoring and permitting in the area of the old landfill for citing new things, to a new contractor. The, the new contractor or the new engineer is going to need to do some additional soil testing, because the disposal facility that is going to take the material, my understanding is every 200 tons, they're gonna require a new test, and it has to be current information. It can't be a number of years old. As far as whether town employees should participate in it and whether there's any cost savings there, by the time you look at what it will take to train people and not have them doing DPW work, especially if the training's during the day, and the fact that we don't even have an excavator, right, to load, to load this stuff in, and the fact that it's unlikely that we will be dealing with this type of stockpile of material in the future, the Safety Committee didn't see any advantage to involving town employees. That doesn't mean they can't be, but that was just, they weighed in on it, because that was a topic that came up. We were talking about Haz-Wopper and hazardous waste removal. Unless we know of other projects or other tasks that we want these trained people to do, which right now, we don't have any except this pile, it might be more advantageous to hire a third party to take care of the whole thing. Injecting a few town employees into part of the removal process may not get you a whole lot. In fact, it might, if you've got a third party in there trying to work and, and they're not happy with our scheduling or the way we do things, it might actually result in a delay claim. So, that's something to think about.
Do we need to do anything with this pile right away, or is it a cat out of the bag and now we need to deal with it? Can we delay it for another year, two years, whatever? Is there anything bad happening that we really need to address it now, other than the fact that we know that we should at some point?
Yeah. I think that it's been there for many, many years, and I think that there isn't, there isn't a regulatory agency right now saying, you need to remove this by X date. We also don't wanna get to that point.
Right, so you're fined if you don't do it by, yeah.
So, as far as, if I'm not mistaken, the last testing was done in 2019, is that correct?
And the Superintendent thought that there was also some more updated information, but he can't put his hand on it.
So, I, is this something you would like to see us to decide to put on a Fall Town Meeting, to see if this, do we have the money? Is it DPW-commissioned money budget that comes out of, or would it be something...
It would be a special appropriation. So it wouldn't be within the operating budget, it would be a Town Meeting special article for X amount of dollars to take care of this.
A fall or a spring?
Right now, the board said to put it on, in past meeting, you said to put it on the list for the fall, but it could be...
How much was it?
$150,000, just based on a ballpark estimate.
Yeah, so it's probably gonna be more.
Yeah, and I think what you really need to do, once they get a new solid waste engineer on board, I think maybe in the fall, you get a quote from the engineering firm to analyze and cost estimate and all of that, so that in the spring, you come back and you get the money to do the actual removal. Otherwise, we're, we're guessing at what's there and what it's gonna take. We're gonna need someone to help us bid it out and do it properly.
Yeah.
So I think maybe a two-step process that will involve both of those meetings.
Right.
So it's 6:22. I can either start on other business or I can have the chief...
Can we bang out the warrant in minutes?
Yeah, we'll start on other business.
Okay, so start on that. All right, so to approve the weekly warrants, and I'm gonna say warrants, because we have FY '25 and FY '26 that we need to approve. So the FY '25 is at $200,698.14?
So moved.
Are we doing them both?
We can do both.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then the FY '26 at $1,491,904.59?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And next, vote to ratify the approval of the Marina and Marina Operator Insurance Policy?
So moved.
Second, can we talk about that? I didn't catch that. Was that in our materials that I...
We talked about that at the last meeting, but it was here, it was presented to us after the last agenda was formulated, so it had to go on this agenda, and we talked about the fact that we have two policies. Liability with respect to our boats, but also liability with respect to pollution.
Oh, right, I'm sorry, I remember.
And one of them was approved last time, but we had to advance this one to this meeting.
Apologize, okay.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes, did we wanna do minutes?
I moved the, I missed the minutes, didn't I? Approve the minutes for the selectmen's meeting on June 23rd, 2025, open meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Continued discussion about the Police Union's side letter concerning the Administrative Sergeant.
So I'm pleased to announce that the, the Police Union has agreed to a new Administrative Sergeant side letter that will replace one that's currently in place. The chief is here, if you want to hear any comments from him, but the union has signed it, and we're recommending that the selectmen countersign it.
Did it change, it didn't change at all, did it?
No, it was just updated with some new requirements within the law for compliance with Rule 14, being sensitive to staffing of shifts and tracking how we're able to save money by running three officers on a shift as opposed to the two with a minimum manning.
So do we have to approve this, BC?
Yes, you need to approve this with a vote in open session.
Okay. So I move to approve the replacement of the Police Union's side letter concerning the Administrative Sergeant.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I wish my name was shorter.
It's right faster.
Okay, so now, the next one is the, consider a request for a resident parking sticker for owner and occupant of a year-round second home.
So we had someone come in and state that they would like the board to consider, actually, I'll take this one, the issuance of a sticker in this situation, because they feel that they pay the full amount of taxes. True, they don't actually reside there, they reside most of the time in another town, but during the summer or any time that they want, really, because it's, it's not a seasonal, seasonally restricted property, it's private property on Lufkin Point. You know, they come and they utilize this, this property that they, they pay full taxes on. The, the regulations don't currently allow someone in that situation to have a sticker.
So this is somebody that has a property on Kenomo Point?
No, Lufkin Point.
I'm sorry, Lufkin Point Lane, Road, whatever that is?
Right, right, Lufkin Point Lane, there's a road and a lane.
Okay, but then they live in another town, so they don't have, their license and their...
Correct. They don't meet the, they don't meet the requirements, and the only, the only people who can currently do that are people who live at Kenomo Point.
That pays the...
That pay...
Lease, they lease the property.
That lease, or own, actually, is what the regulations say. And this is the first time since the regulations went through that somebody has raised this issue and this concern, because although they don't live here year-round, they pay the full amount of tax, they're not a commercial property, it's a residential property like any other, and they feel that they should be entitled to get the sticker.
We, we talked about this, I thought, at one point when we were...
When these were formulated, yeah.
Yeah, and didn't, didn't we talk about potentially charging a lot more for, if somebody was in a particular situation and wanted to grant them...
I, I read over the policy, we didn't make any changes to it.
No.
It does say that the limitation is two, so these, this resident wouldn't have any because they don't live in this town to have it elsewhere.
Right.
This is a different situation. We haven't come across this, where they actually live on Lufkin Point Lane.
It's a second home, right.
It's a second home.
It's a second home, that's what's going on here.
Yeah, and more, more stickers and more cars taking up more spaces from one family, which is really not fair. Unless we wanna consider charging a lot more for another sticker, and then maybe the town makes some money off that, but I don't even know if it goes against our policy.
So, and I guess, if it's a tax, it's taxable property that they pay the taxes on, meaning Elva would love to live out there, but she doesn't, pays the taxes on it, do they deserve a, you know, do they get one or two stickers? Right, right now, it's two stickers, but it's all based on living either in Essex with a license or registration that has your name and address on it, in Essex, or, like I said, Kenomo Point, rent, lease.
Lease or own, yeah.
So...
So they shouldn't have any stickers, is what you're saying?
No, I don't, I don't wanna say what they should have, like, my thoughts are, oh, well wait, this is somebody who owns a second home, pays taxes on that second home, they just don't have a registration or a license that has Essex as the license, as the address. So if the tax bill goes to them and says their name and the address of Lufkin Point Road...
It does, in fact, that's what they brought in.
I, myself personally goes, mm, I guess then maybe, yeah, they should be able to get two stickers. They're paying the tax bill. They're not paying a seasonal tax bill, correct?
No, they're paying full tax bill for a...
So I'm like, I'm gonna let, I said what I...
Didn't they want, like, six?
No, this is a different family.
That was, that was last meeting.
Oh, okay, oh, okay.
That's what, that's what the confusion, this is a totally different family.
And you went back to them and said, everyone has to...
Register their car.
Change the form of ownership, and you'll be fine.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But this is a different situation, where they, they pay the full amount of tax in an area that is of high value, and they feel that they should be entitled to purchase a sticker.
So should we broaden the policy to include your name on a tax bill?
Or why, or you could just keep it at a case-by-case, when they ask.
I think they keep it at a case-by-case.
Yeah.
I mean, this is, I've never heard of this coming up before, and also I know that a lot more people, they walk or drive a little go-kart, not, I say go-kart, golf cart. They don't usually drive their car, but they may need to, so...
Yeah. Do you want to allow up to two stickers at 24 Lufkin Point Road? Yeah, do you want to allow up to two stickers at twenty-four Lufkin Point Road?
I, I think so.
I, I'm in agreement with that, do you want to take a vote?
Uh, let's see, consider, where are we, consider requests for, what is it, twenty?
You could, you could move.
Grant a request, do you want to grant the request?
Yeah, you could move that the board, uh, grant a special request for up to two stickers.
For?
For twenty-four Lufkin Point Road.
So moved.
Second. But the car needs to be registered in the same name, that would be my stipulation.
Same as we did for the other folks.
Right.
Yeah.
So although the address won't be Essex, the person who owns.
Same name.
Right, who has the tax bill to them, they have to have a car registered to them, it can't be to somebody else.
Right, so what if it's a husband and wife with the same last name, I want to make sure I'm clear on it.
I'm okay if it's husband and wife, same last name, if, if it's not, they have to come to us and show.
They need to be an owner, is what you're telling me. They need to be an owner and no more than two.
Right.
Okay.
Could you say?
Your vote?
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So I'm gonna stop here and move on to, um, the Chief of Police.
Good evening.
Good evening, I'm just gonna, we, we made the, um, mic higher, so it looks like it's fitting right, we'd like you to be within six inches.
Yes.
Did you give us anything? Okay.
All right, so this originally, uh, the presentation originally was gonna start with FIRE on what their five-year vision or long-term plans or goals were. So I came up with a couple pointers to discuss, and I welcome you to ask questions as we go through them. Um, but I think it's probably best to start with our current status as a department. Uh, currently, we're staffed with no vacancies, and we consider a vacancy somebody that's on FMLA, uh, or somebody's looking to take employment elsewhere and we're gonna have to post a job. Uh, but currently, everything is filled, so staff-wise, we're good. Um, facility-wise, we're in a, I'd still call it a brand-new building, uh, it's fully functional, no issues there. Uh, as you know, we're replacing our cruisers and fleet to mitigate some of the issues we've had with Dodge. Uh, we're upgrading to modern sidearms, and we were recently re-accredited in twenty twenty-five. So from a, a ground-level bird's-eye view, we are, uh, operating very well. My continual goal and vision is to build trust with the town, give recognition to our officers, communicate clearly with everyone, including town officials, officers, and residents, and to be accountable and transparent, because there's always a little room for improvement. Uh, one of the most important things I've learned, even in just the, the last few months, is that this job is all about, uh, planning ahead and being mindful of budgets and requests, um, and making sure that they're in line with the needs of the town, and making sure that the Board of Selectmen, FinCom, and any other stakeholders, uh, are included in the conversation, uh, and that's all part of the collaborative effort. So over the next five years and beyond, the department should be aware of our capital requests and technology changes. And two big areas that we benefit by being part of the North Shore Regional Dispatch is our radio system and CAD software, those ordinarily would be huge expenditures. Um, but since we got into regional, when we did, we were able to have them basically outfit us with the MDTs, the computer software, so IMC, which is our current CAD, is gonna be obsolete. The regional is working to get us a, a new software, and that's all included is our, um, on our MOA with, with them. Uh, our current cache of radios, I got those for about forty thousand dollars, the portal radios, so we should be able to uh, replace batteries, microphones, antenna stuff as needed until they age out, at which point North Shore Regional should have a radio system built, and they, again, would supply all of that equipment to us, so we shouldn't have any big expenditures in terms of radio or CAD software. Um, our fingerprinting machine was donated from the Essex County Jail, that's valued at roughly twenty, twenty-five thousand, so if that goes, we might be on the hook for that, but it's working fine, there's no issues to report there. Same thing with the BT, the breathalyzer and booking, that's been working well since we've had that repaired. One issue we may see in the future is our body-worn camera program and the maintenance for that. So the cameras will no longer be sold as of this past May first, will no longer be supported as of May first, twenty twenty-eight. So my vision is we will examine a cloud-based program to mitigate storage issues and see what is more cost-effective to get the updated cameras and also have the storage be managed and maintained for a reasonable license fee. Currently, we bought a, a server on our own, the, uh, whole package was roughly fifty-three thousand, we got that on a grant, and we started that in March of twenty twenty-three, and the capacity, uh, is already thirty-nine percent full, so we're coming up on the halfway point of that server, and, and we've seen that the storage is the biggest issue, because it costs money to store it, it costs money to, uh, try and have somebody do that, but Motorola and other companies have subscription services where they will manage all that for you and provide new cameras. Um, and I think it's, it's the best tool we have, whether it's documenting car accidents, uh, domestics, uses of force, parking violations, the camera doesn't lie, and it shows us what actually happened, so I, I would say we, we can't get away from using those. Uh, next area is to continue to replace our fleet collaboratively, which we've been doing. I'd like to see us build one vehicle in annually, and that's due to the inventory and upfit turnaround times, it can be anywhere from three to six months, or six to nine, as we saw this last go-around with MHQ. Uh, have a FinCom liaison quarterly, discuss this issue with maintenance and where we are. Uh, we should be able to build replacement equipment into the cruiser build, such as PVTs, flashlights, cruiser long guns, um, because they're all vehicle-specific and assigned, and this will avoid multiple separate equipment purchases throughout the years and trying to replace multiple pieces of antiquated equipment at once. You know, when all the radar guns are the same age, all the flashlight, it's, it's just a much bigger purchase, but I think if we build all of that into the cruiser purchase, it would be much more, uh, effective. And through cruiser assignments and maintenance, we should be able to have a predictable life cycle on the cars.
So can I just ask you as far as this, um, this vision of having a fleet yearly, um, you talked to FinCom, they see it as a possibility, or did they cross their eyes?
Yeah, I, I mean, this past go-around, we had to, you know, purchase three at once, whereas, once we start to stagger the miles, we could probably roll, you know, build in that one, it'll be one every year so that we don't have a car that's more than four years old, and they're constantly being replaced.
Yep.
It's four years, pretty good lifespan for a police cruiser.
As long as the car is maintained, you should, that's, I think that's very reasonable. Anything over that, um, you know, seventy-five to a hundred thousand mile, that's when they just start to, because they're going twenty-four-seven, so we're trying to stagger the mileage, stagger the use, have, uh, car assignments, so we'll try and work our way through that.
You can get a trade-in if you.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they'll, they'll still have, you know, and that's another thing, uh, like the Ram truck, for example, we held onto it for so long, you could literally put your fist through some of the rust holes on it. We didn't get much for it at all, it was more, we were paying them to take it off our hands, so if we could just, uh, have the vehicles have some value when we go to trade them in to work on the other end for us. Um, training and development of staff, we need to invest in our officers, and this can include them selecting an area of expertise or interest, and we support them in obtaining a training or certification so that they continue to develop themselves professionally and add resources to our department. Some of the trainings are free through MPTC, so it's really just about, you know, the occasional backfill or maybe some overtime for those classes, but our policies and standards all support developing officers, and we need to make good on those and make our employees feel valued.
And, and can I just ask you, because, you know, if it's something that we haven't done before, do we need to create some type of a policy so that you know, like, okay, you've already taken three trainings, it's, we need to get somebody else? You know what I mean, without a policy, you don't have any control over who does what, when.
Yes, so they, they would be divvied out on a fair and equitable basis, and, you know, we're not gonna send the same officer to, you know, five classes in a row. My vision would be, you know, everybody pick one class per year you would like to go to, you know, one-day class, easy backfill, and it's a, a certification, and next year, another class if you'd like.
Yep, thank you.
Um, so this next issue deals with staffing and responsibly adding an additional full-time officer. Um, prior to me taking over as the Harbor Master, I know that there was talk over blending the Shellfish Department with the Harbor Department. Um, taking on the Shellfish could support adding another full-time staffer to assist in the filling of sick and vacation times, and currently, the, uh, Administrative Sergeant Bruce, he tracks how often we have saved by having a third officer on shift and not having to backfill a sick or a vacation day. And the Shellfish, uh, officer could also serve in this type of capacity, that they're on duty, um, to, to cover both sides of the house, both Shellfish and also, uh, patrol as needed. And I think blending all of the marine asset, uh, budgets together so that we have, you know, line items specifically for boats that, that the town, uh, has and maintains, clumping those together in one budget would be, I think, a, a more beneficial way.
And just to clarify for Billy, this is for the future, Billy, not, okay, you understand, okay.
Uh, and then lastly, just, uh, in general, recognition and community engagement. Uh, I'd love to have a designated social media officer that can communicate the good things that we do, not just the big events that people ask questions about, such as the med flights or the bad car accidents or things along those lines. Day in and day out, our officers have positive interactions with people all around town, and while some of those might be in response to a call, there's plenty of proactive, positive encounters, and I would love to get those recognized.
Thank you. Um, so does anybody have any questions? Additional to Elba jumping in there?
No, I mean, you and I talked today about the good things that, um, you do that, we hear a lot about the Fire Department, we don't necessarily hear about what happens with the Police Department, I think maybe there's, um, just because they're not folks necessarily, they don't live in town, so we don't, um, celebrate the things that you do, but I know that there's been questions about police in the past, not here, but, I mean, in general, and I think any good news we have to share about good data is important to share, and we talked a little bit about how can we tell people that we're doing a good job and, and that we're fair and equitable and just. So I think those are, um, just good things to sing about.
Yeah, I, I mean, we do have, uh, certain data sets available that you, you could request, and we could start a conversation on what that looks like or how you would like that rolled out or presented. Um, yeah, definitely be willing to do that.
So I know that we've had some questions or concerns about the parking tickets from over here and, you know, and I've heard comments about the, the new Police Department. I, I know, um, and Peter and I have both been here, we voted, we, we want this engagement, and I, I want to say thank you, because I've noticed it, living on the street that I, I do, I see, um, you know, police officers stopping and talking to somebody who's parked on a sidewalk, and, and that's good to me to see that we have engagement with the public. You know, I'm, I, I think I've said many times, I'm not looking to give everybody a ticket, I'm looking to make sure that your, people are aware that that's illegal, you shouldn't be parking on the sidewalk, type of thing. Same thing with giving out tickets if somebody, if you see somebody going, you know, parking in the wrong spot or going too fast, so thank you. Anybody? No?
No, I think, I think, you know, I trust your judgment, I like your style, I think you've got a good direction going.
Thank you very much.
Do we want to talk about the Harbor Master? Is he gonna talk about the Assistant Harbor?
Do you want to get an update? I don't think it was on here, um.
Six-thirty?
We have approvals to do later for the Harbor Master Assistant?
There was, there was an appointment.
It's at the six-thirty, since he was here to talk about both. I didn't know whether you were gonna make remarks about the people, the new people that you've recommended.
So there was overwhelming interest, um, for people to become assistants. Um, once, so give a little, a breakdown, there's obviously been some changes within Harbor Masters, uh, in Massachusetts, and the vision that I have for the Harbor Department is to break it into two, two sides of the house, we'll have a Deputy Harbor Master, which will oversee a division of law enforcement, and then we'll have a civilian side Deputy Harbor Master, and that's gonna be the Division of Moorings and Aides to Navigation. Um, people have reached out for, uh, positions on both sides, and then me and the Fire Chief have realized that pretty much anytime we get a call down there, it's a unified response anyway, so we opened it up to, uh, firefighters here in town that are, you know, lifelong residents, they have decades of experience on the river, and they're willing to come on and be Assistant Harbor Masters, uh, that'll also help with us staff the lake, and we'll have police out there as well. Um, we're gonna try and really use that, uh, Chapter Forty, Section Five-G, the Water's Way Fund to try and staff that. I know we talked about using some of the ramp fees for, uh, offsetting some costs for that, but the feedback we've gotten from everybody is they're very happy and, uh, willing to, to work with us on this, so, um, we, we had about seven to ten fire, uh, applicants that were uh, willing to join, and I sent those over to Brendan, so I recommend all of them. Um, they all have a wealth of knowledge, they're all very skilled and responsible people.
Thank you, I did have one question, and that is, I know that I've heard through the grapevine, um, the words, oh, let's regionalize our police with another Police Department elsewhere. Um, thoughts, concerns? I, and, you know, you gave a five-year, so that wasn't mentioned, so I'm assuming.
So I think, r- right now, just trying to get a feel for what direction we're going in and, and bringing the department, we do have up to, up to full functionality and get a picture of what that looks like financially. In terms of the staffing, the, the way we run the shifts right now are just two officers, so there's an east car and a west car. If you were going to, I guess, regionalize with another town, what, what is the benefit for Essex? Are they gonna, because you, you're not gonna cut staff necessarily, because you still have to have those area cars, and, and we run into this now when it's two officers on an overnight just last week, you know, a domestic arrest with a six-hour hold, you don't, you're already down one officer, so if we were to regionalize and, and the design was, oh, let's do one officer in each town on the overnight shift, then neither town has any coverage, so I think it's, you'd have to look at it through a staffing model. Um, but I think we are, we have regionalized with the dispatch service, uh, I would consider NEMLEC uh, a type of regionalization, so we, we do regionalize some things, and I think the, the functionality that we're getting from those is, is good right now.
I think the only way that Essex would win is if we regionalized with a department that was smaller than us, because in every other situation, we're gonna be, you know, paying the freight of a larger department, and I don't think it's gonna work out, you know, and there is nobody around that's smaller than us, so, sort of a moot point.
Yeah, I, I know that there are some departments that call us more, um, because they need the help rather than us calling them. Um, but, you know, we could, we could explore that, but right now, I, I don't think it's, I don't think it's within the five-year vision as far as, uh, my goals.
Okay.
Can you explain how the Harbor Ma- Assistant Harbor Master works? Like, you've got a number of people. What, how does, how do they get deployed, like, what's the, are they scheduled, how does all that work?
So last summer, uh, it was, I was told that they only patrolled an average of three hours a week. And already, this season, at least since July one, we've, we've been out on the Fourth of July, I've personally gone out a few times. Um, we don't have an accurate picture of what having the appropriate staff, as well as a fire resource, a police officer, an Assistant Harbor Master out there. Uh, we do need the weekend coverage, and we do need coverage during the week, so that's why we were trying to see what ways could we get creative in staff in, um, funding this, uh, this new department design, because we, we do have to be compliant with the state of having, um, certified Harbor Masters, but nothing stops you from having assistants that are also firefighters, so rather than have a crew of, you know, just police officers and then you do a fire call, you can kind of blend that duty to have a firefighter who's also an Assistant Harbor Master with an officer out on the boat, so you're kind of getting that blended experience.
But are people scheduled, so it's Saturday morning and, you know, Ernie is, is on shift, or is it, hey, Ernie, can you run out and? How does it, how is it happening?
So the vision of, of that is that a month out, we're gonna pass out a, a calendar, uh, you know, let people sign up for shifts that they're available, weather permitting, they're gonna go out and patrol.
And we have a budget, that's all budgeted?
It is, it's been significantly cut down the past few years, but we're trying to get our hands around what does it actually cost to have this staffing model of, of having coverage on the la- on the, uh, lake and the river.
And I think it's important to point out, it was the same when, when we had, uh, part-time police officers and they were plentiful, they're not anymore. It was to our advantage to have, you could get fifteen of them, have fifteen of them, because invariably there are going to be people that are on your staff that they're out of town some weekend, they're on vacation, so the more people that you have on the roster, doesn't mean they all work at once, and you're only gonna fill so many hours, but invariably, if you don't have a deep roster, you're gonna have some that go unfilled.
Yeah, and my issue is not about the number of people, it's about, I just don't know how you call upon them to do the work.
So the, uh, once I took over July first, I asked the two off, the two assistants we had, how, how does your, how was your staffing, and it was, well, we get a call around Thursday or Friday to ask if we're available Saturday or Sunday. I said, would you be willing to do it a month in advance? One of them has kids, one of them's retired, the retired guy would love to work more during the week, the other kid would have different availability, so I think once you give them the opportunity to kind of set their schedule and then add, you know, seven to ten other people here in town, you're gonna see a lot more participation from people on the roster.
Can I belabor the point? So do we have an idea of when things are busier, so you would kind of focus, you know, certain times of the day, and like, maybe you're not working the entire, you're not staffing the entire day, but certain times, people are going in or out, or, I mean.
Yes, yeah, you're not gonna put, you know, four guys out on a, on low tide, but, you know, you would staff it if it's gonna be a. you know, you would staff it if it's going to be a holiday weekend, you're going to have staff there. Because you can predict that you're going to get calls, it's going to be busy. Just this past weekend, we had coverage on the Fourth, Saturday and Sunday. Multiple people were, you know, stopping and coming up to us saying, thank you for being out here. It's, we clearly see that you're slowing people down in the no wake by the point while they're trying to load up and go to the beach. So the positive feedback is very noticeable right off the bat.
Do you, does weather affect the deployment of the assistance? Like, if it's a rainy Saturday, are you going to say, well, you know, we don't need you to go out? Because there's, in all likelihood, not much of a...
So the current system in place was if it was inclement weather, they didn't go out, but they were on-call, so that if there was an incident, they would go?
Yeah.
I envision some type of an on-call list.
Yeah.
Especially with the fire, because if there is an issue, they'd be going anyway, whether it was deploying the fire boat or going out on Marine One or Marine Two.
While we're on the topic, I know it's not you, but the buoys downstream of Canomo Point, the red and the green cans, it's, and then there's like a no-wake down at the very end, and you're supposed to take a hard right and go through those? It seems like there's something wrong there, like one of those cans should be where that no-wake buoy is, so that people know where to go. Because I see a lot of people crossing to get, you know, as soon as they come out of the mooring field, they cross down to the cans.
Right.
And, which is fine at high tide, but when you get approaching low tide, a lot of people are going to go around. And I just, you know, it's not you, it's the Coast Guard, but it, it seems like an odd placement of...
Yeah, I would, I will reach out again to them. I know that we have reached out to them at least twice to move those, and there has been no response.
Okay, so we did, because I know Danny said he did.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, then you, you said that.
But yes, I ran aground coming in on Marine One, following the channel, and by the end of the day, it was, all right, let's go to the right of the sailboat and cut around the two buoys, so let's pass that on to people, because they are off, and you would expect them to be spot on. But I don't know if it's just Mother Nature, or the dredging, or what, but they are very...
Never used to be there, but I do like the fact that it's well-marked now to get out to the backside of cranes, because that never really was.
Yes.
And it's, it's now seems like that's a stable part of the, the environment back there, where when it was just starting to, to form like that, it was like a milk jug, somebody stuck out there.
Yeah.
Had to figure out where to go. So it's nice that there's like four or five buoys that leave people out there, which is nice, yeah.
And I think this is also in line with the Coast Guard was, had talked about removing local aids to navigation, and I know a letter was brought forth, so we do need the aids in the river, whether or not it's the Coast Guard deploying them, or if we eventually take on that. But we do need to have the guidance out there.
Definitely.
Okay. Can I ask one follow, and it's not necessarily, we're looking at this First Do software for the fire department.
Yes.
There's a, and I did look to see if there was any sort of integration with police, but it seems like you have some system that you work with the dispatch? Like, is there any integration of those systems?
Right now, our system is pen and paper for the existing cruisers. We do log mileage and fuel through dispatch, but collaboratively with the fire department, we were going to purchase the fleet management module of First Do to add our vehicles into that, so that we could have one system for all, or at least public safeties vehicles all in one system. DPW has their own, but police and fire would use the First Do together.
Okay, and is there a scheduling thing that they also, I thought that there might have been a scheduling mod, whatever. I think it's great that you're going to be able to work with it.
So I, yes, I think what you, what you were going for is, fire is going to use First Do's scheduling component, but we have Planet Power Time.
Okay.
We, yeah, we already have a subscription for our scheduling.
Great, sorry, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Okay, so the next item on it is for us to continue talking about the Strategic Plan Committee and consider reappointment of existing members. So before I get started in this, I went and looked at the strategic plan that's out there currently, that is in place until 2028.
Or 2027?
The document says 2028.
It says twenty-three to twenty-eight.
Oh, really?
So my, my concern is, would we do this at this point where maybe next year we should be doing this? And this is my question, should we table this until next year?
I think that's a great idea.
Okay. I looked at the document, I see a lot of points that I can see us moving forward on the strategic plan. So that's why when I saw that, when I read it, and I said, well, why are we doing it now? This should be a 2026 thing that, so that by 2028, we have somebody have reviewed the current, and then see what we're missing type of thing.
I guess my question is, do we, I mean, because this came up like a few weeks ago, why do we have to have something in place?
We have to approve them, because they were on like three-year terms, so we have to approve them. That's why they were on the appointment.
But we can't just let it fizzle away?
Well, it's an ad hoc committee, right? So there's no state law or town bylaw saying you have, you have to even have one.
Yeah, okay.
So if you want to say that it's on hiatus, and you want us to show that the website that just says currently on hiatus, new members to be formulated in 2026, we can do that.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I think the more important thing is for people to, able to see what's on the document, and, you know, they can reach out to, oh, I see that so-and-so's on it, let me go ask them if there's anything.
How old is the last addition to that? I know we added climate change like five years ago or something like that. Has there been much since then? I just don't want...
Well, the first iteration of it was in, we started to do it, the first iteration in 2015.
Fifteen, yeah.
And then I think it took through 2021, or, I'm trying to remember what the first one went to. And then we had to go through a process, and that took a little time, and then, so that ended up being twenty-three to twenty-eight.
Okay.
So there's only been two.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, you know, this list that BZ did provide to us, it's twelve members that are on it currently, it looks very similar to this. Will those people still be either involved or what? I don't know, so that's why, can we say table it until summer of 2026?
Yeah, I'll just put that it's on hiatus, yeah.
Two points. It, it's still active, right? So there's no sort of like grant funding that would be dependent on having an active, you know, like the open space plan kind of sunk the ability to, so there's no...
We got, we got, I think we had some grant funding when we did the first iteration of it.
Yeah.
To help actually pull, pull the first plan together and get it off the ground, but I don't know of any...
I think it would be just sort of supportive material for a grant.
But you see what I'm asking?
Yeah, so if you, I don't, there's no requirement, like the open space, but if you're going for a grant, you say, well, this was recommended by our strategic planning committee that's made up of these people and did this, this, and this, that would be helpful for the grant application, but it's not required.
And it's still live now anyway, so we're good for, and then...
That's right.
Something, somebody asked me about something, and I forget what it's called, it's like a master, master plan. Why, why have we not thought of?
That's very different.
Yeah, can we talk about why we don't have that, and why we have a strategic plan, and is, are they mutually exclusive, or?
No, they're not mutually exclusive, but a master plan is more aimed at zoning and the overall build-out of the community, whereas a strategic plan touches upon a variety of areas that you'd never see in a master plan.
Mm-hmm.
And if we want to know more about that, our town planner will be able to tell you all about it. And if you want, I can have her kind of do a comparison of the two things for the board.
Yeah, I mean, I, I know there's a website somebody sent to me, I think maybe it might have been you, but, you know, why would we do that? I mean, and it maybe comes back to Jay Teslov's question too, right? Does a master plan kind of codify your community's plan for growth? You know what I'm saying? I'm just...
Yeah, so let me, let me get her to, to give like a synopsis of, of how those things correlate and bring it to you at the next meeting, and then if you have, if you want to get into it deeper, we can do that.
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you. Or whenever, I mean, I don't think there's an urgency.
Okay, so discussing whether an annual resident senior citizen's commercial clamming license should continue to be offered free of charge. So I, again, did some research on this, and it's not like it's drastic, we have like twelve people that have the senior commercial. It is a benefit to our seniors. If you can still bend over and dig at sixty-five years old, or sixty years old, hell, good for you. Come to my house, I have waiting to be done. So I am all in favor of leaving it exactly the way it is, maintaining that it stays with Essex residents. I, I don't think it should be beyond Essex residents unless there's some drastic reason, like somebody is a senior who has lived here for X amount of years and moved, and now they, you know, on a special case basis, but...
Yeah, but you don't even do that with the, with the non-senior commercial.
So, everybody in agreement, and we just...
Sure.
Thank you.
So we don't have to take any action?
Vote.
We don't have to take any...
You don't need to take any action.
Because we're not changing anything. Now, we're going to move, just buzzing through here today, we're going to move on to the review, review cost and final design and placement of possible town donation signs. So you will see in your packet the, the design, which, you know, Peter alluded to on the last meeting about, something that really doesn't target just outsiders, but also residents. And in talking to, I'm going to give the benefit to Ann Buckley, I had mentioned it to Ann Buckley, and I showed her what I had had originally on iteration two. She gave me the verbiage of enjoying your visit to this lovely Essex spot. I thought that was a great way of capturing.
Both, yeah.
Yeah, both. And, and then, that was one, so I just wanted, I don't think we have to vote on it, but are you all, you know, do you think that this is okay?
Yeah, you mean the sign itself? Yeah.
So then, the cost, I believe it hasn't changed, correct, BZ? It is still thirty dollars?
Thirty dollars each.
So I was looking at...
How about installed? Is there...
The DPW would install it.
Okay.
So they would put in the, no, they would put in the post, and then they would...
Attach it.
But the posts are probably already in town, it would just be a matter of like...
Adding to.
Adding to a post that's...
It's possible, in, in some location, yeah.
In some locations. What's the matter, Annie?
Nothing, I'm just thinking, nothing.
You don't want it attached to a stop sign?
No.
Telephoning.
So I also sat down and figured out, okay, where, if I was to put them up, where would I want them? So I'm, I'm saying Canomo Point, three to four, depending on where. Memorial Park, three, Centennial Grove, three to four, and then possible future areas, we don't have to do it now, but like Island Road, or somebody even said, what about Main Street? Like, one of the pocket parks. So I don't know if you have any comments, any thoughts?
Well, how about on Causeway, maybe near the kiosk?
And that was a suggestion also.
And, you know, when people are walking in and out of the restaurants and stuff, or walking along to Woodman's or whatever they do, I think maybe cover in a couple on the, the Causeway would be good, and maybe one at the boat ramp.
Excellent. So with the three or fours that I had had, it come out to eleven, but so are we talking possibly fifteen in that way?
Yeah, you know, it's not like it's a lot of money. It's up to the DPW how much time they have to put these in. They may freak out when they see fifteen signs they got to put in.
Annie is biting her lip, so I'm going to ask her if she has a question.
I don't have any questions, I think it's great.
You're just waiting to donate, she can't wait.
Yeah.
Is this thing live yet?
Yes, it's live.
It is.
All right, there you go.
I'm already donating a hundred bucks to the shipbuilders, right?
Yes.
Yeah, thanks, Peter.
I, I think let's, do we want to go with fifteen to start?
I can get fifteen ordered, and then...
And then we can just determine exactly?
Yeah, well, do you want to determine that now, or do you want me to get the signs, and then you're going to bring it up again?
I think the list is great.
There we go.
And then just add the Causeway?
Two at the Causeway, one at the boat ramp.
Yep.
Okay, I'll give fifteen of signs ordered.
Thank you.
Nice, thank you. And just to let you know, I did also ask people, do you think it's tacky? And they all felt like, no, we have a beautiful place, so it'd be nice to see if we can get anything. So the next is to consider issuance of an indoor entertainment license for Centennial Grove Cottage. Any comments from the board?
At the last meeting, the board was looking at the list of rules and regulations or conditions, and there was a discussion about whether you should charge that deposit for potential noise violations.
It's a check you get back, it's, you know, it's not real money.
That's right, unless you're, unless you do something egregious, and then, you know, pay.
Yeah. It's, you know, a safety net for us.
Yeah, I'm fine with it also. If there's a hardship, if somebody has an issue, then they can come talk to the board ahead of time, and I, I don't want to put that on there, I'd rather leave it the way it is, and...
And this gives you the ability, on a case-by-case basis, depending on what's going to happen, to, to add conditions. So this is essentially ready for the board to vote and sign if that is your will.
Okay, I make a motion for the board to vote for the licensing for the Centennial Grove Cottage Entertainment.
So moved.
Or, do I have to read the whole thing?
No.
Okay.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pam, do you want to make up a master one that they can sign next time they're going to sign a warrant? So Pam, this is an example, but Pam will set up the official one.
He'll write it in his notes, I'm imagining. Okay, so the next item on the list is for, to consider the signature contract for locality Media Inc. for additional module within the fire department's existing fire management software known as First Do.
So the fire department already does use this software. The fire chief has indicated what they already have and what they're looking to add with these additional modules. Since the contract is over five thousand dollars, the contract has to be signed by the Board of Selectmen.
Can you just clarify exactly what, some are in bold, and then there's some that aren't, so I just want to be clear what modules he's actually purchasing? Is it all of the ones in bold?
Yeah, so he says...
Yeah, the bold is the application, and then it, below it says manage hydrants, including hydrants visible, inspection, failed inspection, configurable checklist.
Right, but if you look at the, it says occupancy management and pre-incident planning isn't bolded.
Okay, well, I have the contract that they want you to sign.
Thank you.
Occupancy management and pre-incident planning, responder, hydrant management basic, inspections, scheduling, basic training records, events and activities, assets and inventory, essentials online training package, and implementation and configuration services, which those last two things are just to spin up the, the new modules.
And the five thousand K is in addition to the, what we're already paying for the current, we have EMS and fire documentation?
Right, and so if, you see, this company is providing it on a calendar year basis, so they've prorated what would normally be eleven thousand nine hundred and fifty-dollar batch of modules to the five and a half months, including a one-time fee to get to, to get it started. The fire department worked specifically with the finance committee when the FY26 budget was being planned, to be able to pick up this extra software. So they have the funding for it, and it was very intentional.
And the contract would allow for, if you're adding some of these other things, would it allow for additional licensees, people to log in and be able to use it?
Very good question.
I've done this before.
Yeah.
Total different area.
You're asking how many people from the department could log in?
Yeah, so like right now, if they're only using EMS?
How many seats? How many seats?
How many people can, you know, can log in, I just wanna make sure that it's not 11,900 for a full year, but, oh, by the way, you need seven more licenses in order to be able to log in.
Mm-hmm, and training too, what about training?
Uh, the Fire Chief, I'll try to find it here, but the Fire Chief did not mention that there was any limitation on who, who they could allow to log in, configuration.
And that's okay, he can get back to us.
It doesn't say, I don't think there's an issue with it.
All right, and he, so do we have to sign that now?
Yeah, yeah, because they need to, they need to get it implemented.
But can we get, can we get a follow-up on answers on those?
Yeah, I will.
We'll assume that it's open.
Yeah, he did not say that there was any limitation whatsoever.
Um, so I'm gonna make a motion to Board to sign the contract for Locosity Media Inc. for the additional modules that the Fire Department's looking for.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Also, um, you know, some of this data is, would valuable, would be valuable for the police to be able to access, so if they could share some of this.
Yes.
Would be great.
I can fill the rest.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item is to review the Board's public comment policy with, with respect to timing, public comment, duration, meeting, and any other policy that may be So, right now, if any changes that we make to the timing of the public comment would have to mean we'd have to update this, because it says at the end, so I sat down with BZ, went through it, and I understand how difficult it is sometimes to be at the very end, so what I'm looking at possibly doing is making some adjustments, so that I still wanna keep just one public comment, because of the fact that when we do have hearings, we do allow public comment sometimes, so what I'm planning on doing is having the public comment before other businesses, so that people can make comments on, it would be, the changes that I'm looking at doing is having BZ do his report at the beginning, then having any agenda items, and then, before we start, the other business items that we would allow public comment.
So.
Sorry.
So like, where, well, sometimes Brendan doesn't do his, um, his update in the location where it is, you know?
I'm moving it, I'm moving it, so it's first.
Okay.
So he won't, we won't start having hearings, or public, you know, like, in.
Appointments.
Appointments, thank you.
Appointments.
Until 6:30, so that BZ can get through his items.
Okay.
To tell us what's up, what he, you know, what's happened.
And then allow public comments after.
And then after appointments, so some of those appointments may be somebody coming up, in, in some cases, like when we did the tennis court, we allowed people to talk about it, it's that type of thing where, after that, after appointments, then we'd have a public comment before we had our discussions about our items.
Okay, so, BZ stuff, appointments, and then public comment.
Yeah, so then I think that.
What about at the end of the meeting?
Nope.
Okay.
It, I, I really wanna make sure, this is a business meeting, we're trying to get through it, we wanna hear what the public has to say.
Right.
But we also still wanna be able to get through our meetings.
Yep.
So, I believe, BZ, we would just wanna change that, to say, you know, public comments prior to other businesses, or unless the, the Chair makes a change, can we do something like that?
Yeah.
Isn't that, because I'm thinking that, you know, there are some agenda items that are gonna be juicy, right, you're gonna wanna, people are gonna wanna, and that would be at the discretion of the Chair.
Yep.
To, in the, building the agenda, to say, you know, on this one, let's put public comment, and I think that's allowable in this policy, is that correct, Brendan, that at the discretion of the Chair?
You'd have to change the policy, because it says.
At the end.
At the end.
Yeah.
Okay.
That, so that's what the Board said when this policy was written, but the Board can now say something else.
I, I think that the Chair should have the discretion to add a, a public comment period on an item they deem worthy, or juicy enough.
A hearing.
But juicy's not the term you would.
Right.
We won't use that.
Thanks, thank you. Red, red at the source.
But I think it should be an item that the Chair deems important, not necessarily that somebody who's already spoken on something wants to talk about something else.
Well, and again, I'm gonna reiterate what I said at the last meeting, which is, at any point when our agendas come out, if somebody has a comment, they are absolutely able to send an email to the Board of Selectmen, and make sure that, because that way we will have it, and we'll be able to see it, it, sometimes it may be Monday that we see it, because if Pam's not in the office on Friday, she won't get it out to us.
Right.
Can I ask a question, somebody said there's a paper, Mark Lynch said there's a paper folder full of letters, but it might have been in ye olde days.
It used to be something called the reading folder.
That's what he said it was, that's ye olde reading folder?
And, yeah.
With your bifocal.
But now, today, as you know, when something comes in, we scan it and send it to you.
So there's no paper letters?
There really aren't, because we try to capture anything of substance and get it to you in real time.
Yeah, okay, um, do we need to, are you gonna draft the change that we?
Well, I'm gonna suggest that it, so it says, "It is the intent of the Board to include a period for public comment," instead of at the end, it would say, "After the conclusion of set appointments for a given meeting." And then it would say, continue on, it would, could keep unless the Chair determines that the public comment is not appropriate due to limited, et cetera, and then a new sentence would be, "At the discretion of the Chair." A, an additional, or additional public comment periods, or just one, or?
Opportunity could be.
Uh, yeah, I, I'm only thinking that if we had a hearing, and, and there was a group of people in here, that we could, you know, say, "Okay, does somebody have public comment," but I don't think it should be constant, I don't think it should be with every appointment, I, I just feel like if there was something that has people upset, or has people happy, I'll take either.
Would we have different rules for that, or would we keep the same thing?
It would be the same.
Same rules.
Same rules, yeah.
So we'd have two 15-minute periods?
It would say, "At the discretion of the Chairman, additional public comment opportunities may be added to a given agenda."
Perfect.
Yeah.
So I'll just make those changes.
And then if you could just send it, you know.
Yes.
Send us the link, so that we can go look at it afterwards.
Yes.
Can I just ask one other question about, do you do first read, second read stuff, or do you just make that change, and then it's good to go?
It depends on what it is, there's been times when we've had to make a vote on something that, if it's the first time we've seen it, I know I've said, "Hey, I don't think we're ready to make."
Yep.
But it's, it's not, like something like this, where we've already got a policy, and we're just tweaking.
Yep, okay.
Type of thing.
So, you're gonna vote on that, yes, because it's, you voted on it to make it in the first place.
To approve the changes as noted?
Second.
So moved.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't have anything else.
Uh, okay, so we're gonna move on to the appointments, so can I do a consent agenda, I think so, right, on all of this?
Except for the fact that, well, I guess it says as listed, so even the one that's, the ones that are contingent on drug and medical, and Corey, it's, it's listed, so you could say, as, as listed on the agenda, yes.
As listed on the agenda, make a motion, move to make a motion to approve the consent agenda for the Affordable Housing Trust, the Essex Cultural Council, the firefighters/EMT, the Harbor Master Assistant, Harbor Master Assistant three years, and the MAPC alternate, and they also the open space.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, at this point, I'm opening it up for public comment, I'm gonna check to see online if anybody online has a public comment. Unmute yourself, and. I don't see any public comment online, so I will ask in the room if there's public comment. Is no public comment, that's 7:21.
On the day that we change the public comment policy, we should just scrap it.
I make a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.